Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to introduce everybody to the September 25th City Council Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum, and we'll honor our flags.
I'd like to read the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of Texas stands on one nation under God, indivisible, and every living being just for all.
Honor the Texas flag, the great divisions to be Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Counselor Kober.
Mr. Powerhead. Father be thank you for this evening that we get together, that we are all of sound mind and good health. Father, we just honor your name. We glorify your, what you do for us in life. We ask that you just be present with us here this evening. I ask that each and every one of us understand the importance of your presence here. You said that if there are two or three gathered in your name, that you would be in our midst. And since you are all-knowing, all-wise, you know, there are some decisions on the books this evening, on the table this evening, that we just need your wisdom to help us make those decisions. Father, I thank you for the differences of our council and of our citizens. You have made us each and every one for a purpose, and if we can just understand that, that none of us are either right or wrong, we are different, but we have been made that way by you. Father, that we would love one another. We pray that you would just bless our city, bless our community, bless our efforts, that we would be prosperous from here on out. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, moving on to item number four, Introductions, Recognizations, and Proclamations. Item number one there is a proclamation for October 2024, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I believe we have members here from if y'all could have
Crisis Center.
Crisis Center, yes. If we could step up here. How y'all doing?
Good.
Crisis Center, all right.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I'm gonna read this proclamation here. Cityville, Campbell Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In the Cityville, Campbell, in the recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the Crisis Center of Matagorda and Wharton County and other community organizations to work toward elimination of domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence remains a persuasive issue across El Campo, Wharton County, United States, the world, and the world, with implications for personal and community health. Whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender, identity, or social, economic status. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is nationally recognized every October and is an opportunity to help our community promote and protect the safety and freedom of all who seek refuge from this terrible crime. And whereas the Crisis Center of Matagorda and Wharton County is dedicated to helping victims of domestic violence by providing free and confidential services such as advocacy, education, shelter, resources. In the past year, the Crisis Center has provided services to 438 clients of domestic violence and 6,938 nights of shelter to adults and children. Through these programs, individuals and families can feel a sense of hope, safety, and protection. And whereas research shows incidents of domestic violence are reducing by creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and care for one another. The City of Bay City encourages members of the community to work together to increase domestic violence awareness. And whereas during the month of October, the Crisis Center will be promoting public awareness of domestic violence. On October 17, citizens can participate in Gold Purple Day, a national day of action during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, by wearing purple as a symbol of peace, courage, survival, honor, and personal dedication to domestic violence awareness. On October 22, the Center will host Walk a Mile in Their Shoes in support of victims and survivors. Now, therefore, I, Eugene Bustamante, Mayor of El Campo, Texas, do hereby proclaimation the month of October 2024, Domestic Violence Awareness Month in El Campo, Texas, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the Cityville, Campbell, Texas, to be affixed on this 25th day of September 2024. All right. Would y'all like to say anything?
Now, we just really are, the month of October means really a lot to us because we do service a lot of victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. So it does bring a lot of awareness to those victims that we do service, and it brings a lot of awareness to our agency. Some individuals that come into our agency have no idea that we even exist. Without this Walk a Mile in Their Shoes and without the support of the council and the members and the citizens of El Campo, we've got our police department, our EMS, our fire department, they have no idea we're there. And so with your support and with your encouragement, these individuals know that they have a place to go to, that they're not out there alone, and that they can become that survivor that they need to be. So we are very, very thankful for your support and your recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Do you need a picture?
Yes. Yeah, great. Will you take that picture?
Sure. Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that.
The paper.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, guys.
All right. This time, we are going into item number five, a public hearing. We will be opening the public hearing at 6:08 PM. At this time, if anybody would like to, we've got two, Mr. Paul Quinn. If you could come up to the podium, state your name, address.
Paul Quinn, 2207 James Avenue, El Campo, Texas. So I've been following in the paper over time the discussion of taxes and raising our taxes. A lot of us don't get involved. I plan on being more involved and staying a lot more involved in what's going on in our city. Some of the research I've done is it said that we need to raise our tax rate to handle our debt service that we owe. Another article I read is our tax rate is sufficient to handle that debt service. I don't know the answer. It seems like those two contradict each other. I did do some research on our bond rating. We have a double A minus bond rating. That's based on our amount of debt compared to our population and our amount of debt based on our, it could be on our valuation of our properties. I don't know what the answer is to that. But another thing I found is the City of Victoria did a study on their efficiency within their government. Where could they make changes? What could they do to be more efficient? I don't know if they outsourced that, if they did it within their own council. They reduced their rate by two cents by doing this. I've done some research on, simple research, and I'm not advocating reducing staff. But I did do some research on the size of our community versus the size of a community that's double in size. And I've found that we have a large staff as compared to other communities twice our size. I think that's something we could look at. Adding positions to our city staff. That's adding not only annual income, but we're also having to pay healthcare pensions that extend out how long? I in looking at this, I can't go to my employer and say, I need more money because the cost of living is going up. But I feel like our governments, city, county, state, federal, they all come to us and say, we need more money. At some point, our government has to live within its means. You can't continually come back and say, I need more.
Mr. Quinn, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay, understood.
Mr. Quinn, did you leave your contact information
I did.
on this card? Would you mind if I reached out to you tomorrow to discuss that?
Because I actually had, I thought I had five minutes. I found out it was three. So I cut out quite a bit.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time, and yes, I would love it if somebody would reach out.
Okay.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
You may want to hang around, see what, what good's coming next.
All right, next, Mr. Eli.
John Ely. Regarding the tax increase and the debate about that, I read both the articles in the paper. They were very informative from the two different positions. So I guess I'm always reluctant on tax increases. So I would say, if you're saying that we're uncertain times or whatever, you don't know what the future is gonna be, then we ought to have a very modest tax increase, if any at all, looking at that factor, if you think that's gonna be a big factor. That's about all I have to say. I didn't do any major research or anything. But, you know, try to hold the line, or maybe just a slight tax increase.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ely.
There's one more, mayor. She didn't have the opportunity to sign up, Ms. Debbie Smystrol.
Okay.
I didn't know I was assigned, but she, but I didn't sign the form.
Okay, Ms. Smystrol.
I didn't know how long I had, but Mr. Quinn said a lot for me, so I can get right to the point. I agree with Mr.
Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Debbie Smystrol and live at 916 Spruce Avenue. Okay, I read both Ms. Slatik's report and Mr. Ward, and I agree with Mr. Ward. For one thing, when you get a certain age, you get limited to your income and everything. But doesn't, I was wondering, doesn't the raising property taxes help the revenue of the city?
It does.
The revenue, I mean, the property taxes keeps going up every year. So that's one thing that, you know, I think, well, you're gonna get more city taxes through that. But anyway, since Mr. Quinn said a lot of stuff, I'm gonna go to what we haven't seen. And I'm talking about basically the south side of town. My dad always said, we live on the wrong side of the tracks, and I now know why he said that because I'm seeing more and more. But Spruce Avenue has been neglected. We've lived out there for thirty-some-odd years, going on thirty-two years. And anyway, we've been told by both Mr. Thompson and Mr. Karinek that when the strip, new strip machine came in, Spruce was gonna be a guinea pig on using it. And we've also been told, three or four years, that it's, Spruce Street will be repaired, replaced. It doesn't need to be potholed, patched. It's been that. The potholes are given out now. But I've got pictures, you know. This is what Spruce Street looked like this afternoon at 1:30. By tonight, the street sign has been cleared off. It's the same one that you just passed.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, we're not, we have a drainage problem. We have a street problem. We have a blithe problem. How can we say we want more taxes if nothing's gonna go towards the infrastructure or the well-being of the people of what we live in? We're proud of our community. But I'm sorry, a lot more goes on happening on the north side of town, and it seems like south side is being forgotten. And yes, it's more rent property and all over there, but us who do own the property, we respect it, and, I mean, we would like for it to be taken care of. A lot of places are trying to fix south side up, and I gladly offer my, you know, I welcome it, but we're proud of the south side. And, you know, time after time, we keep calling. Everybody knows Mr. Ross Priestmyer and my husband. We call the office several times, even monthly, and nothing seems to ever get done. I'm out of town, but I don't, if we're not gonna see any result out of the taxes, you know, I say, why keep taxing us? Because we're not seeing anything.
Thank you.
You left your contact information?
No, I didn't, no.
Please leave your phone number so I can call you tomorrow.
All right, at this time, 6:17, the public hearing is closed. Moving on to public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The City Council is limited to making a statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry or reciting existing policy, but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. All right, I believe we had one, yes, sir.
John Ely again. I was just thinking back about Beryl, and I always wondered, I felt like I was completely disconnected. And I don't know how other people in town feel, but, I mean, I had no communications, hardly knowing what's going on, had no power. Probably a lot of people had no power, maybe a few people have generators, but I was just thinking, in a situation, it doesn't happen very often, but couldn't we have someplace that, you know, has reliable power, like the Civic Center or somewhere where you could have, you know, water in there, restaurants people can use that have no electricity, they can watch the city and get any information at certain times of the day or something, so that you don't feel so disconnected when everything is cut off? That's just something that I've been thinking about since Beryl. You know, it wouldn't be that hard to do it, I don't think. You know, of course, you'd get into some, maybe some potential liabilities, but you'd have to do whatever you could to, you know, limit the access to the public so your liability doesn't get too big, but that's just something that I think about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ely.
All right, thank you. All right, item number seven, Consent Agenda.
Mayor, staff would like to pull item number three off the consent agenda. This is Resolution 202448. We would like it to be considered under individual consideration.
All right.
Mayor, I move to approve items one, two, and four, the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor, I second that motion.
We got a motion to second any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question with regards to these insurance rates. That would be so the TML, did we know that the increase was gonna be that much? I mean, I know we've been budgeting for increases, but 20% is what you thought, Renee?
I, no, I didn't think it was gonna be quite that high. But looking back at the claims, it makes sense. When you look at our loss ratio, it was essentially for our liability, our GL claims. Essentially, this year, it's double what it was last year. Yeah.
So can you explain, and I guess this is pretty self-explanatory, but just to confirm, we go through TML because we get lumped in with, we have better purchasing power than economies of scale to help, hope that we can use somebody else's goodwill to kind of offset.
Exactly. It's one of the biggest pools. I mean, it's 98% of Texas cities are subscribed to TML coverage in either work comp, liability, property, all or components. They don't do monoline anymore, but they, you know, you have to have at least two. But yeah, they're the foremost experts. So, I mean, even at a 20% increase, I highly recommend we stick with them.
All right, any further discussion? We got a motion to second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number eight.
How about item?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Here. It's 7.3.
Items for individual consideration. Item number one, Ordinance 2024-18, ratifying the tax rate and levying a tax.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to item number 7.3, the Resolution 202448.
Okay, sorry about that.
If you don't mind.
No, that's fine. We will go, the Resolution R. 2024-48, authorizing the renewal of workers' compensation insurance with Deep East Texas Self-Insurance Fund and authorizing the city manager to execute all related documents for said purpose.
Do you want me to set this up, or do you want to?
This one's pretty simple. We, they came back, they wanted to keep our business, so they came back with a revised renewal. Because the original one was high, and I said, I mean, we're gonna have to go to market then. It's pretty simple, and they provided revised rates.
And these revised rates are included in a revised, in the revised resolution that's on the screen? They dropped around $20,000?
Yeah.
From what was in the packet?
The original renewal was $108,000.
And Renee shopped them, told them that we would switch, and then they came off. So thank you for reaching out and giving them a run for their money on this one.
We've had them for about four, five, five years now, I think. We've had a good, pretty good partnership. We don't have any, haven't had any difficulties processing claims. They do have a lot of resources that we can utilize, training resources, and we can analyze our exposure and see if there's anything they can do to help us. They wanted to keep our business, so.
Renee, had you had to shop it, where would you have shopped?
Our broker, HCDT, we have a broker who shops it for us. And then I also looked at TML IRP as well, and they were, they were very close.
Okay, he did shop it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He, this was the, yeah. After he told me he couldn't find anything better, TML came in and provided a quote as well. And they, again, they were very close. But I think for me, the differentiator is that Deep East provides a 3% rebate that we can use that to purchase safety supplies.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any motion?
Yep. Okay, at this time, I could get a motion to
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve item three in the consent agenda.
Which would be Resolution?
2024-48.
But we do have
The resolution's different, though, than what's in the packet, right? So it needs to be the one presented tonight as revised.
Yeah, just as presented tonight.
Yes, the same motion as
I make a motion. We approve it as presented tonight.
We got a motion on the floor, second?
I'll second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Now, mayor.
Now. Item number eight, Ordinance 2024-18, ratifying a tax rate and levying a tax.
Yeah, let's start by thanking the state of Texas for allowing us to be here tonight through this process, because it's been quite onerous, and I think we all want to put this tax rate to bed tonight. Staff's recommending that you go with in front of you option two, which would approve a property increase tax by the adoption of the tax rate .46006. This rate would not include any new positions for next year. It would kill the code enforcement position. It would kill the parks position. But it would put $50,000 in the budget for parks, for parks' contract labor, which would allow our team to contract out some of the things they're doing in-house. Mr. Hancock, this could look like addressing some of the blithe issues if we were to designate those funds.
Say that again, please. I don't, I'm not sure what page you're on.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Hancock. This is at your seat, and
Oh, it's underneath there?
Yeah, it's a sheet.
Oh, okay, I see.
Because we want a, we want a tax rate tonight, and we don't know where council wants to go with it. So we want to provide you with all of the options, including adding both positions, adding neither, adding one or the other position. So that, these are the options in front of you. And again, our staff recommendation, my recommendation, is for you to adopt a budget without increasing your personnel next year.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve Ordinance 2024-18 as amended, approving a property tax increase by the adoption of the tax rate of 04606, 006, which is effectively a 3.57% increase in the tax rate.
I'll second that.
You're gonna have to do a roll call vote after the discussion, as a reminder. And again, he said it correctly, but this is a tax increase. I'm not trying to pull wool over anyone's eyes. This will be noted as a tax increase in the ordinance as well as in the document. And so just being crystal clear here, we're not recommending the no new revenue rate.
Discussion now?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that I've always said that I've never, I ran on it, and I've always said that I'd never approve a tax increase unless it was an emergency. And this isn't, this takes away the two positions that I was standing my ground on. And it is an emergency of what happened on Wharton Street and what's gonna happen in town and country. That's been, needed to be done for 20, over 30 years, probably. But I've always stood on that, that I would never vote for a tax increase unless it was an emergency. And without those two positions, I can vote on that. I'll vote yea on that.
Now, which two positions are you taking out?
The only two positions that were requested in the budget, the code enforcement position and the parks position. We pulled both of them out, Mr. Hancock.
Why? I thought we approved that, we approved the budget last month, last week.
You did approve the budget, Mr. Hancock, but the tax rate to support the budget was defeated. And so we have to recommend a new tax rate tonight, and then the next item will be to amend the budget to match the tax rate you adopt in this item.
What are we gonna do about these two positions, then?
It depends on what you do with the tax rate, and then in the next item with the budget adoption.
We're gonna wind up with the two positions?
No, sir. Well, that is not my choice. I don't have a vote here. You can choose to add the positions or not, but based on his motion, the position
What has happened since the last meeting?
Well, for one, we don't have a tax rate that will support the budget, so
We said we had the .46592 was going to support those two positions.
It wouldn't have supported both positions, unfortunately, because we made modifications. We would've had to pull from somewhere else in the budget because we couldn't, we couldn't sit at that original rate that supported those two. We had to modify it. So that was the starting, that was the starting point of us reevaluating and reassessing things. And then the second point, it was pretty clear from the last council meeting that it wasn't palatable to add positions.
I thought it was. Clear to whom?
It was clear to me, Mr. Hancock, that the council was somewhat divided on that. I took the position
I thought we were divided five to two.
I'm not sure, Mr. Hancock, because we never took a vote. We weren't able to, because unfortunately, the first time we took the vote, we only had four here, four for and two against. And so because the state law requires a supermajority, five have to be And so, because the state law requires a super majority, five have to be present and voting. So, that's, that's how we ended up here.
But we ended up last meeting with a consensus.
I wasn't confident that we had a complete consensus.
I was.
So, at this time, you can absolutely vote, and we can reconsider the rate, and someone else can propose a rate, second it, and then that rate can go through. That's the prerogative of the council. The council has the choice whether to raise this rate higher or lower, or keep it where it is. Mr. Hancock, we will be addressing code in this budget. It might not be in the form of an officer, but we will be addressing code, and we will make sure that that is a priority. We did not touch the demolition budget. I think you'll get a lot further with that demolition budget, we personally believe, than you would with the code enforcement at this time. And we don't want to see that taken away. And we think that you need, without additional staffing to offset, if we can't have both, the parks person to help mow in the evenings or on the other, every other Friday to try to address the concerns, then we need to look at outsourcing that, and we need to possibly reconsider how we presented this budget. And that's what we've done. That's what staff's done.
I wasn't clear on why we were going to need a code enforcement officer, since we already had personnel in our past budgets that were supposed to be enforcing the code. And in my opinion was that we had added a code enforcement officer so we could just put some more items in the rest of the budget to cover what was being done by code enforcement. Now, when I left here at the last meeting, I was told that our budget was approved and the code enforcement officer was in it, and the four point, the point four five six, excuse me, the point four six five nine two tax increase or tax rate was going to cover that code enforcement officer. Now, what happened since then?
The code enforcement position is still in the budget as it stands right now, because you haven't amended the budget. You adopted a budget. The budget was adopted in a four-two vote, but we don't have a tax rate that supports that position. And on the floor right now is a tax rate that does not include that position. You can absolutely vote this down. You need a super majority.
Wait a minute.
I'll remind you, you have to have five votes to get any of these tax rates done, except the no new revenue. So
But we had, we had the code enforcement officer in there at four point six, at point four six five nine two.
Correct. This is
That's in the budget.
That's in the budget, but we don't have the adopted rate at point four six five nine two.
So, if we adopt the rate of point four six five nine two?
Yes, sir.
We will be covering the budget, and we'll cover the code enforcement
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If it's the prerogative of the council, yes, sir.
The prerogative of the council will be to approve that rate.
I need a motion to do that.
We have a motion, don't we?
Yes, but he, he made a motion to adopt the lower rate without it.
That's the one the staff recommends.
So, we'll have to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if it passes five-two, then that's what the rate's going to be.
And if it doesn't, then you can make a motion for another rate. Until we get there.
It's got to get five votes to pass.
We need, anything above the no new revenue rate needs five votes to pass.
Mr. Hancock, I understand what you're saying, because when we did leave here, council approved, that was the tax ceiling was the four, whatever, the four, four six five nine two. That was the highest they would be able to go, because the original rate failed. And I will say, the consensus, what I interpreted was, as well, there would be a five-two vote to support the, at least one position, maybe the other position or the contract. I understand what you're saying, but nothing was, nothing was formally approved at the last meeting.
So, this is a suggestion of the city management as opposed to the council?
Yes, and the council has the prerogative to add the position, take it out. We're trying to get you a tax rate at this point, so that we can go into the next fiscal year.
And the four six zero zero six also aligns with what they, they previously presented as the recommended rate as well. I remember that. Whenever we first came in here, that's what, that's what staff recommended. So, you are going back, I mean, this is what we, you are recommending.
This is what we recommended last week when we met.
Right.
It was the recommendation last
That's what I mean, yes.
Stayed the recommendation. We haven't changed the course.
Exactly.
What changed was the rate defaulted.
Right.
I mean, defeated, staff regrouped and said, this is what we need to, this is what we'll need to, to get this budget, to get this budget supported by a tax rate. And so, that decision is up to council this time.
This was recommended to cover the town and country and the sewer lines on South Wharton Street.
The sewer lines are paid for out of utility fund debt, but yes, the town and country debt is in here, and it, this, this rate will support the INS piece that raised because of town and country.
Okay, yes. But once again, I will say that, that, when we left here, that's the impression I got, is what I just, what you stated and what I repeated to you. So, I can understand where it is kind of surprising.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Hancock.
Mayor Bustamante?
We got a, we got a motion and a second on the floor.
There's a second.
Yeah, there's
Sorry.
So, we got a motion and a second on the floor. And
You have to do a roll call.
We have to go across the board.
Say yes or no.
We got more discussion?
We got more discussion? We'll start dealing with Mr. Wallace.
All right, yea.
Yea.
No.
Yea.
Yes.
No.
Yea.
So, now we're going to move to another item. Do we have a budget amendment?
Yes, sir.
That's reflective of this?
There is a budget amendment. I have a, I have a copy of it for you that reflects this. It was a five-two.
Yes.
We'll be passing it out.
We had a five-two vote.
Yes, sir.
You got it down.
Here is, here's
You have it down. Who voted which?
Yes.
Here's a copy of the tax, tax rate that you approved. I need to, I just have the tax.
One other change.
Oh, you only gave me one copy. Okay, I apologize, I didn't have seven copies. So, the wording on this next one would be to approve ordinance 2419 amending the fiscal year budget by striking $482 in section two and replacing it with $56,733, and further approving as amended. And I don't, I don't have that written on a screen, so if you need me to walk you through that for this amendment, you can, I can.
Kaylee, do you have something?
I think at each, at each place, at each station
It's, it's the blue written on the second.
That's the recommended tax, so it'll be right under the second section, which applies to the tax rate that was just approved.
So, tell me what you're trying to do here?
I'm trying to make the budget match, the tax rate support the budget, because the budget was adopted with the proposed tax rate that was defeated. So, now we have a new tax rate. We need to amend the budget, because the new tax rate won't support the budget that was previously approved. I apologize for the confusion on this. I'm, I know that it's been a long process to get here. But we need to amend the budget, because your tax rate doesn't support it, the one you just adopted.
What it did at the last meeting?
We didn't adopt a tax rate, Mr. Hancock.
No, we adopted the budget.
You, you did, yes, sir.
With a certain amount of confidence that we were going to stick with it.
Well, unfortunately, the state of Texas requires that your budget is adopted and then your tax rate. And so, the budget did pass, but the tax rate failed. And so, that's how we ended up in the position we're in.
We need to read the blue, blue line. Is that what you're saying?
Unfortunately.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, the budget ordinance, amending the ordinance by striking $482 in section two and replacing it with fifty-seven, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And further approving as amended.
And what will that fifty-six thousand be for?
It will be for parks contracting out parks work.
No enforcement of our laws.
Mr. Hancock, we, we do have money in there for the enforcement of the law, including a sizable demolition budget, and you can have, you have my reassurance that that will be our focus as we move in, even without the position.
That's what I was contending before, but the city administration said that was not going to work.
We, we feel, we felt, we feel and felt that the addition of the position would help, but at this time, we recognize that this isn't something that can be done in this budget. And so, we'll still focus on code. We'll still get you those reports. We'll still prioritize
These reports haven't helped much.
We got a motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
And a second. Any further discussion? We got to go around the table again?
No. And it, it's just a simple majority at this time.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
I understand.
All right, we're going to move on to item number three. Resolution R. 2024-52, reciting Resolution R. 2024-46, awarding secondary disaster debris monitoring services to Debris Tech, and further awarding secondary disaster debris monitoring service to Title Basin Government Consulting LLC, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract.
Good evening, council. If you recall on the, at the 9-9 meeting, you authorized us to contract with Debris Tech as our secondary debris monitoring company. After contacting them and saying they were selected as secondary, they stated they do not, they're not in the secondary business. They'd rather be primary for somebody to reserve their resources for their primary people. So, we need to rescind Resolution R. 2024-46, and we're going to go with the third choice of Title Basin, who's still a good company. So, requesting you to select Title Basin as the secondary debris monitoring service.
Mayor, I have a question. So, when you, when you, when we, when we did this, did, did the people that backed out knew they were going to be the secondary people?
They know that we're going to select a primary and a secondary out of that. So, they are hoping to get the primary bid, but in our case, they got the secondary and then they opt. So, if they would have got the primary, they would have taken it. But since they got secondary, they didn't want it.
Is this a common technique? Have you seen it before? Is it sour grapes, or is it really a?
They've done it to us before, the last time we did this. So, we thought this could be coming, but we still need to evaluate them fairly.
So, really, we, we don't have any other choice?
No, based on the RFPs we got, that's our last, our third choice.
I've moved to approve Resolution R. 2024-52 as presented.
I second that motion, Mayor.
We got a motion and a second and discussion?
Yeah, just one thing. Is there any way, I don't know how many of these services are out there, but is there any way to, I don't know, earmark them to where you know in the future, you know, you know? I mean, it's kind of like they're trying to have their cake and eat it too here.
So, we can, but next time we send out RFPs, they could come out on top for us, based on the ones we get.
I don't, I don't have any other comments.
All right. Any further discussion? We got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Did Mr. Hancock vote?
No. All opposed? Mr. Hancock?
What?
Are you for the resolution?
I'll vote no.
Okay.
All right, moving on to item number four, Resolution R. 2024-53, authorizing the convenience of real property by special warranty deed to Lido Manufacturing Company LP pursuant to the Texas Capital Fund Agreement.
Earlier this month, you were made aware of Lido's intention to purchase the property. They are asking to close. This resolution would authorize the mayor to close on that property once all of the TCF conditions have been met and the grant is completely paid off. They have requested payoff. We have confirmed that amount with the state, and we'll be working to close this property and put it into Lido's name. But we need your permission to move forward to do that.
When they close, where does the money go?
It goes back to the state of Texas.
We don't get any of it.
No, sir. And the closing costs are on Lido.
Mayor Bustamante, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 2024-53 as presented.
We got a motion by Councilman Ward to approve it.
Second.
And a second by Mayor Protem. Any discussion?
I'll be happy to see that lot cleaned up.
Yeah. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, at this time, this meeting is adjourned.
No. So, I want to meet the